Good evening, everyone. We'd like to just give thanks for all that we have, for the opportunity to represent our city, for the love in our community. Give thanks for the sense of community we have and hope that we can share that sense of community and be an example to make everyone in our community feel welcome. Thank you to the OCFA and our police department who do so much for our community, keep us safe, make us feel safe, and put themselves on the line for all of us in the community. Thank you also to all of the volunteers in our community. We hope and pray for the strength to do right on the city council. Thank you.
Okay, if you guys please join me for the presentations. We'd like to start today by recognizing Sally Rodman. If you'd join us, please. She was appointed January 2017 and has served until December of this last past year. To show you what an excellent negotiator and keeper of the peace Sally is, she actually is able to go in next door Rossmore, make her point, and not create any fuss, which is almost impossible. So, congratulations. Thank you so much for your service. We hope you come back. Thank you. Now, we'll have presentations to our new commissioners, William Bandak and Traffic Commissioner Bruce Murphy. Can't have enough Murphys, you know? Ones too many? Well, maybe they'll get a right one here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck on the commission. It's a lot of fun, I think. I'm going to turn this over to the new board chair of the Orange County Fire Authority, our own Shelley.
So, tonight we get to honor Chief Roberts, who was named Division Chief of the Year of Orange County Fire Authority. You know, I've got a special love for my firefighters, and to be able to get an award like this in that organization is quite an accomplishment. We have about 1,000 firefighters. They've been there for years, boots on the ground, doing all kinds of state-of-the-art things, and so when we get our own recognized, we take full pride and credit for all of that. So, you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council and city staff and residents. Appreciate this honor very much. It's an honor to serve your community and with all of you, and looking forward to a good 2020. Thank you.
Hi. Let me read this first. Okay. So Kathy, let me read this. The month of January has been designated Career Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. North Orange County's Regional Occupation Programs Career and Technical Education gives high school students in our city experience practical, meaningful applications of basic math skills, reading, writing, thus improving the quality of their education and giving all student leadership opportunities in their field and in their communities. City Council hereby proclaims February 2020 as Career and Technical Education Month in the city of Los Alamos and urges all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by North Orange County Regional Occupational Program and other career and technical opportunities available in the city. And I'll give you the microphone if you'd like to say a few words by your group.
Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Council members, thank you very much. North Orange County ROP serves five districts and about 16,000 students, and as the good mayor here said, that we do prepare them for college and career. And at Los Alamos High School, we offer the electives of EMT, where students are actually seniors are actually taking the exam to become a EMT when they're 18 after they graduate. And also careers with children. The child development, high school students are taking child development, actually work with the preschool that's been on the campus for the community for about 35 years. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate our collaboration with the city and also the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. We actually have some cards today. Reverend Samuel Pollan, if you'd care to start?
Good evening to the honorable members of the council. My name is Reverend Samuel Pollan. I serve at the Community Congregational United Church of Christ, just down the street on Cotella. And is there anything else I'm supposed to state?
No, it's fine.
No, it's good. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. It's been a while since I've presented at a council meeting, and I must say the atmosphere today is much nicer than the last time I was here. So, I'm grateful for that, and I hope that we can continue to see amicable communications. I wanted to suggest to the council that now is a good time, as we're moving forward in 2020, to look to ways that we can work together to restore trust with the council and the city and the police and members of the community. As many of you are aware, there were actions taken by the council about two years ago that sparked a lot of division, controversy, and I've seen among members of the community sometimes fear to interact with city officials or police, you know, among immigrants, among people of color, in general, just sort of a sense of concern because there was so much that was stirred up back at that time. And you may not see it in the day-to-day, but I know that there's people that have been affected, and also in the schools, there was kind of an increase of the type of polarization that we saw here in the community. That had its ripple effects in the schools, and there was name-calling, there was bullying that I've heard about. And I wanted to highlight the example that the schools have taken to move forward to address some of those issues. There's been a very active response among parents and students and teachers and administrators who formed the Human Relations Task Force, which I'm sure many of you are aware of. They've been diligently meeting, working on events. Some of the members of our congregation are part of that, who are teachers. Others have children who are students in the classes. And I've just been really inspired by that example of working forward in a positive way. And I wanted to suggest that we look to how we could do that between the council and the community, how we can look to building that kind of human relations. And with your leadership, we could also work to partner with that Human Relations Task Force and design some events that would help rebuild some trust between residents and the police, residents and other city staff, and Parks and Rec. There could be great opportunities for us, but it's really up to you to take that opportunity to move forward. And I just wanted to let you know that myself and other members of the community are ready and willing to partner with the city with that kind of an effort.
Thank you.
And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Mr. Josephsberg.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Henry Josephsberg. I have my office down on Cotella, and I live in Los Alamos. Thank you for the opportunity to have a little chat about my views about what's going on in the city. And as I put in my card, I'd like to talk about the fiscal impact of some of these events. I would start out mentioning the Shea Properties Project in Cypress. And I looked at an article, an opinion, in the Event News Enterprise the other day and realized that the scope of the project, of course, is for Cypress, and they're building mixed use, and what the author, Tim Keenan, characterized as being high-end housing. And all I can think about is that this burdens our Cotella, that people are going to be using our infrastructure. And I don't know whether the city council has taken up the notion that we should be involved in any kind of negotiations that Cypress is involved with to develop that property. It's the 13 acres near Costco. And the reason I bring it up in this context is because I've heard many statements from the city council, this and past, that the city is losing its fiscal footing, and that in time we are going to be reduced in our reserves. And there's all sorts of ideas going around about what should be done. In fact, I've heard one idea is that we should reduce our police force or eliminate it. I don't like that idea. We have an excellent police force. The very first time I addressed the city council, that was the first thing I said. We have a community policing force that I have had direct contact with over the years, and they have done an excellent job in dealing with community issues. I have the highest praise for our police force, and one of the things I said when first I addressed this committee is, don't burden the police force with more jobs than are really necessary for Los Alamos. And that, of course, moves me to the ordinance that was enacted a couple of years ago that I've been very vociferous in opposing. And one of the reasons has been its fiscal impact, that the ordinance itself seems to be fiscally neutral, but it's not. It would impact the police. But also, enacting an ordinance of that sort means that you're drawing the inevitable legal challenge, which I'm a part of. That ordinance, from what I've heard since, has been inspired by the Orange County Republican Party. Well, if that's true, then perhaps they should bear part of the burden. Michelle Steele is running for office, casting herself as a taxpayer advocate. Good. Taxpayer money should not be put into that ordinance, either defending it or opposing it. If indeed it's the brainchild of the Orange County Republican Party, they should pay for it, and they should step up and make sure that the city of Los Alamos does not suffer financially because of it. I see no right reason why, as a city council, we could not go back, if I'm correct, and make a request. If they think that that was such a good idea, the fiscally prudent thing to do is to pay for it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Karen Adams, please.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. I'm Karen Adams, and I've been a resident of the city since 1966. The reason I'm here tonight is to voice my concern that the city is unwilling to assure me of a fair decibel reading of my neighbor's newly-installed pool equipment. My neighbor is Corey Locken, the former director of Parks and Recreation with the city of Los Alamos. Mr. Locken installed his pool equipment along his side yard with only 18 inches of clearance to my property. His equipment is directly across from my family room, kitchen, and two upstairs bedrooms. We spend most of our time in these rooms. The noise from his pool equipment has made our lives miserable. Mr. Locken runs his pool equipment a minimum of 12 hours a day and has ran it for 24 hours a day for weeks on end. His pool heater also runs 24 hours or more, depending on use. I filed a complaint with the Noise Ordinance Division. The officer took a decibel reading and found it out of compliance. Mr. Locken was told to bring his equipment into compliance. Mr. Locken is unable to bring his pool heater into compliance. Per a reliable decibel app, his pool heater is non-compliant. It has a decibel output between 65 and 69 decibels. I sent a picture of the noise output from the heater to the noise compliance officer as well as the city manager, Chet Simmons. Anyone listening to the heater can tell that it is very loud without a decibel reader. I asked the noise ordinance officer and Mr. Simmons to assure me that the city will test Mr. Locken's pool heater for compliance. To date, I have received no such assurance. I expected the city to test Mr. Locken's pool equipment, which includes the heater, when I filed my complaint. Mr. Locken's pool equipment must be on, including his heater, when the city wants to take a decibel reading from my property. It's only fair, and I think you would consider it the same if you were in my position. So, thank you for considering my request.
Thank you. Chet, will you get back to us on that one, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alex Duran.
Good evening, Mayor Murphy, Mayor Pro Tem Turco, and council members, Doby, Hasselbrink, and Gross. Will and I come before you today on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission to issue the Race on the Base Challenge. Each year, the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission challenges the city council and other city commissions to the Race on the Base Challenge. This friendly competition and participation award recognition takes place among the city council and each of the commissions in two categories. First, the largest number of attending representatives, and second, the highest percentage of representatives per group. The Race on the Base is one of my favorite events of the year because it gives us a chance to show off our amazing city. This event is attended by over 6,000 participants and spectators, and will offer over 60 vendors from all over Los Alamos as well as neighboring cities. You can either participate by signing up or volunteering to the event, and to participate in a race, and a glow-in-the-dark donut run, 5K, 10K, or reverse triathlon. I invite each of you and our friends watching at home and online to this challenge, and also spread the word to your friends, neighbors, and family to participate in the Los Alamos Race on the Base this February 21st and 22nd. You can register and sign up and volunteer by going to www.racetonthebase.com. Thank you.
Alex, one question, please. For recent history, do you know who won the challenge last year?
I believe it was Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts. And we intend to keep it that way.
Okay.
Challenge accepted.
Thank you.
We'll see you there.
You will see us there.
I have two cards for Barbara Farrell.
I don't think it'll take that long. One is, I want to join with Pastor Sam in saying that we need to heal the community, and a lot of us were very badly hurt by the incidents that happened two years ago. And as recently as last night, I was speaking to a young man in my neighborhood who was a DACA fellow, and I just said, "How are you?" And he burst into tears, and he's a grown man. He knows that his mother is also in jeopardy. And we, I agree, I fully support our police department. I look on Nextdoor, sometimes they say nice things and sometimes they don't, but they usually say nice things about the police force, but they also talk a lot about crime in my area, down the alleyways, about cars getting broken into. Fortunately, I have a different parking situation, but we don't want to draw anything away from what they need to concentrate on, and we don't need to reduce our police department. We need them just the way they are. They're good community police officers. They don't need to toil in something that they can't really be involved in legally. So, there's that, and then there's the anti-camping resolution that's going forward. I'm very concerned about that because, you know, kids camp around. And mostly, I guess at the school, I was thinking of my granddaughter, they do overnight camping in the schoolyards, in the grammar schools. You're all aware of that. But the other thing I meant to mention before is that I worked very hard with the school board to get the Human Relations Task Force going, and I am very hopeful that we can do something that's similar, that models what a community should look like, how they should be helping people assimilate, and not to be tolerated, but to be admired for their differences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? You don't have to give a card, or you just want to speak, please?
This is Pastor Sam again at the community church. I just wanted to speak to the anti-camping ordinance briefly.
Okay.
Just to, I'm just getting familiar with it. Obviously, as a pastor at a church, we deal with a lot of transient or homeless folks that are passing through, looking for assistance, and I'm guessing that a lot of that ordinance is intended to address ongoing issues that come up related to such camping and that sort of thing. I just wanted to encourage the council, before enacting an ordinance, to do a thorough legal review and analysis to make sure that you're not inviting lawsuits that would challenge that. We all know that homelessness is a vast problem in Orange County, and that when cities or municipalities and other areas try and push it away just because residents are concerned and angry, sometimes it takes the courts to intervene and say, actually, you know, if there's no other place to go, we can't criminalize people for camping. So, I want to make sure you review that. I know that legal fees and concerns are something that are important matter for the council. Maybe a better approach would be to invest in some of those community relations, community policing. I know there used to be a homeless liaison in the police department that I worked with on a regular basis to deal with individuals, so let's explore some of the options that may be more productive in finding solutions, and just consider that fully before passing it.
Thank you. Please?
Hi, my name is Joel Block. I'm a resident of nearby adjacent Rossmore. I want to thank the council for this opportunity to speak. I want to deal with a few issues. First of all, I want to congratulate you on the ordinance that you're considering, again, tonight, for I guess the second reading concerning the addition of a third district for the election coming up. I believe I'm correct in saying it's a second reading, and I'm happy that you made that choice, rather than, I guess, the only alternative was to have a two-year, election for a two-year seat at a large basis, which would seem to be going backwards. So, I think you made the right choice of those two alternatives. With regard to the issues addressed by Pastor Sam, specifically the ordinance and the California Families Act, it's ongoing litigation for several years now. Hopefully, I know you had a private meeting on it with your council. Hopefully, we can now turn the page on that. The case may or may not, at least the issue of home rule may or may not go to the Supreme Court, but irrespective of that, it would be prudent on the side of the city to look for ways that it could reverse the prior decision on the ordinance and work out some type of an arrangement. It just seems like, you know, I'm a retired attorney. I said the last time I've represented police officers from the middle of California down south. I dealt with the issue of all sorts of issues under the Police Officers' Bill of Rights Act. I knew the court decision that upheld that intruded much more into local control. Lots of cities fought it and lost, and I can see that the home rule issue is never going to win, and I told this council that was a concern of mine. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Mayor? Thank you.
Excuse me, I've got a bad throat. My name is Stephanie Robertson. I'm the missions and outreach director at Pastor Sam's church, and part of my job is taking care of homeless issues in our area. And while I understand your concern in wanting to do an anti-camping ordinance, you're misguided in thinking that putting people in shelters or forcing them to go to shelters instead of camping is not solving the homeless issue. Shelters are not homes. They're not houses. They're not places for people to live indefinitely, and there is no bridge to a home by putting somebody in a shelter. You would be better served to develop some kind of housing for people, placing people in permanent supportive housing, rather than shoveling them into shelters and hoping that they will go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing done, we'll close the oral communications, go on to council announcements. Would you start off tonight, Dean?
Sure.
Thank you.
I had an opportunity this last month, since the council meeting, to attend a meeting with Southern California Edison at their facilities up in Irwindale, where they laid out the plans that they have for power outages, sudden power requirements. They distributed some samples of the new wiring that they're putting up in the high-risk areas in the forests that affected us so badly in this last year up in Northern California. They're making a huge effort and a huge expenditure with addition of cameras in those areas, addition of weather stations in those areas, in addition to putting a much thicker covering over the wires to avoid a contact type of a problem. I was very impressed with the efforts that they're making. I'm now on their email list, so I will be able to follow it a little bit closer in the process. I also attended the Cypress State of the City address. I also attended the Cypress State of the City address, which was very nice and very well done. The League of California Cities, Orange County, had their membership meeting, which I was able to attend. I participated in a ribbon cutting for a new business in La Salle for Southern Cal attorneys. I also attended the 79th Theater Sustainment Command from JFTB, their annual Dining Out program. This was the second time, actually the third time, that I've been able to attend that, that function. And lastly, this past week, I spent a half-day with the American Red Cross dealing with sheltering fundamentals, where they actually wind up going in and creating shelters for people during emergencies. That was the first phase of a two-phase presentation. The next one coming up is actually practicing setting up a shelter. And we see that so often on the news, when it's a major fire, where a lot of people are displaced, how they handle sheltering. It's just good to know, it's good knowledge, it's good to be aware of how the Red Cross partners with communities, with cities, to be able to do that. And then lastly, I had a meeting with our new city manager, and I want to specifically commend Chet. It was to be a one-hour meeting, and we wound up a little bit longer than one hour, but a lot of good dialogue. He laid out a lot of what he hopes to accomplish in the process, first of which, we're going to establish some new goals in the way of the city, but I'm very, very happy from the standpoint of what I heard, and I think we're on the right course. I'm glad to have you heading the team up. There was a discussion earlier about the 13 acres in Cypress, and I wanted to mention that I've started a dialogue with our acting city manager, Les Johnson, and I believe it's been forwarded over. If not, I will make sure that it does to our existing city manager. There was concern about the development of the 13 acres and its impact on Los Alamos. Many years ago, there was a, an agreement between Cypress and Los Alamos for development that occurred at the racetrack property, which was referred to as LART. We had an agreement where the city was, was reimbursed a dollar per square foot for any new development. That agreement expired shortly after Costco was built. And knowing the plan to enhance the 13 acres, I had talked to Mr. Johnson about working with Cypress and considering having a new agreement done where we would be able to continue to have a revenue stream that came in to help us mitigate traffic issues, use of the Cattella Avenue, and maintenance of Cattella Avenue as it impacts us. We were able to do some good things with that money in the past, and I'm happy to report that the discussions up till now have been very positive, and there's a good likelihood we may be able to consider a new agreement with Cypress to include that, that fee on future developments, including what may go on the 13 acres. So, for the gentleman that brought that up, we were ahead of you a little bit on that, trying to do something proactively. So, please be assured, we're watching for what's going on in the community and our neighbors, and trying to do the best we can from the standpoint of our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tanya?
All right. So, I actually have stuff this time. And it's because Wendy sends me all these wonderful invitations, and because I am so brand-new, I don't know that I don't have to go to them all. So, I was a guest at the Orange County Fire Authority's Best and Braveest, and it was wonderful to see so many very humble people present that do amazing things, and they were so honored. It was great. And then the bagpipes and drums, I literally was speechless. I recorded and showed it to my children. So, that was wonderful. And then Saturday, I joined Dean at the 79th Theater Sustainment Dining Out, which is where non-military are invited to come and kind of see what they do and how they, how they play. And that was another wonderful event, everyone in their mess clothes, and it was an honor to be present there. I went to the Mosquitos and Vector District meeting, it was my very first one, and got a link. So, if anybody is looking for mosquito or vector, they are separate information. You can now go to our city website, and there's a link provided, which I will continue to have updated as they give me updates. I'll send them to Ms. Wendy and she'll add them to our website. You want to start looking now while the mosquitos are quiet, so you'll be ready when they come. I also went to the ribbon cutting, and I also went to a chamber breakfast, and I've got some more stuff on my calendar that I'm super excited to go to, but that is it for this moment. Thank you.
Shelley?
Sure. I did attend the League of California Cities OC Division meeting. This was at the Nixon Library. They did a very good review of the public safety legislation that has come over the past few years and kind of the fallout, and how they kind of need to fix some of these things, and they're in the process of doing that, which is good. A shout-out to the Nixon Library. If you've never been, it's just in Yorba Linda. This place is amazing. It's, it's just cool. Whether you agreed with Nixon or his policies, or even if you were alive during his presidency, to be in that is just phenomenal, and these docents give you these tours, and you learn so much about just the life of this man and his family. So, I would highly recommend making the trip to Yorba Linda to see this. I did attend the Best and Braveest, and yes, watched Ms. Dobie just ooh and ah over pipes and drums. It's something that everybody needs to experience, and just honoring our firefighters, and just some of the things that they do is pretty amazing. So, I would like to remind everybody of Race on the Base on Saturday, as the City Council reclaims their trophy over most participation, because we will be adding our city manager and our city attorney to our team. I think that's fair, right? Yes.
Looks like they might not be going.
And you have to wear a suit, because that's all you ever wear. So, we'll see everybody there. On Friday night is the Glow Run, Donut Run, which is a lot of fun, and we have music, and we have a health expo, and it's just, it's a neat community thing out on our base. And then Saturday at 11:00 is Frida Kaplan's memorial service. I talked about her last month. She passed away at the age of 96. She is the first woman to own and operate a wholesale produce business in the United States. She was the original owner in Rosmar, right across the street from Rosmar Elementary, and she set up her company in Los Alamos, right off Lexington, because she didn't want to raise her children in the LA Produce District, and so she made the decision to come out here. And anytime you pick up a habanero chili, or spaghetti squash, or jackfruit, that's Frida. So, we, we are very proud of her legacy, and her two daughters and granddaughter are carrying on that legacy as we speak. It's a pretty fascinating company. And then we also have on Sunday is the opening day ceremonies for Los Alamos Youth Baseball. This is near and dear to my heart. I raised two boys. Baseball was our life. It's where our friends came from. It's where my kids ate two to three meals a day during baseball season, and it's our 62nd season opening over there. We are on the military base. We have been this whole time, and if you want to see some good community baseball, ages four to 14, check it out. We're going now, between now and Memorial Day. And that's it.
Thank you. Mark?
Sure. I attended the fiscal sustainability meeting. Nobody mentioned that. I'm surprised. You get credit for that, guys.
Wait, was I there? I was there.
You were there.
I attended.
Where we talked about the city's fiscal situation and some of the possible avenues for resolving that and putting our city on a more firm financial footing going forward. I attended a CERT meeting, the Community Emergency Response Team at Orville Lewis Park. Thank you to OCFA. Thank you to RPD for having representatives there as well, and thank you to all the volunteers in CERT for putting on that informative event. It was great. I had lunch with our new city manager today, and I share Councilmember Gross's sentiments that we, I'm feeling optimistic about the future and about all the many great things that we're going to do as a city with, with your leadership here. Looking forward to Race on the Base this weekend. I'll be doing the Glow-in-the-Dark Fun Run as well, Donut Fun Run. I'm not going to wear a donut, or I'm not sure what dress up. One year, we will dress up, and we'll, we'll try to take the crown, but the State of the City is in a couple of weeks, March 4th, and the Americana Awards is coming up on February 29th, where we will recognize our Los Alamos Person of the Year, Dr. Bill Poe. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask, Ron, could you give a quick update on Race on the Base? How anybody could still sign up at this point? Or Emlyn?
Pass it to Emlyn.
We are still taking registrations all the way up until race day. You can register on-site at the Joint Forces Training Base. Please bring your ID and have it ready at the gate, and we are taking registrations for the Junior Reverse Triathlon, the Glow-in-the-Dark Donut Run on Friday night, and the 5K, 10K, and Reverse Triathlon on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. As, as it was mentioned, there is a memorial for Frida Kaplan Saturday at Cottonwood Church from 10:00 to 12:00, and the Americana Awards are also the same night. I'd already spoken what a great event they are if you, if you do get a chance to come. If you do go, please do not bid on the purses, because my wife will be bidding on all the purses, and they're expensive enough as it is.
Bid on a purse.
With Tanya, I was able to go for the eighth time, in my case, to the Senior Club Awards, a really phenomenal event. Just a great group of ladies, mostly ladies, and it's always a lot of fun. Also, was able to go to the Los Alamos Elementary Speech Contest, which is also a very cool event. It's 22 children who have won a preliminary round, get up and give a speech to over, a roomful of over 200 people. I couldn't have done it at 10 years old. No way. It would have been like talking to a rose bowl full of people, but these, these children are phenomenal, spoke on interesting current topics, and I recommend any of my colleagues who get a chance to do it, it's really, really worth the afternoon. Went to the Chamber of Breakfast and got to hear Coach Felton speak. He's an amazing public speaker, very, what's the word? He's a good speaker. We'll leave it at that. And I'd like to welcome Chet, now here full-time. As everybody said, we are very optimistic, looking forward. We think we made a great choice. And finally, I would like to congratulate my colleague, Board Chair of the Orange County Fire Authority. If you look back in the history of how rarely somebody from Los Alamos is able to chair a major county board, such as fire, sanitation, OCTA, any of those, it's, it's a milestone event, and I know you've worked very hard, and congratulations. That is all I have, so we will go on to the warrants. Oh, I'm sorry. So, what are you doing?
I actually don't have anything for you tonight, sir.
Thank you. I knew that, see? Warrants. May I have a motion for the warrants?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless the council member requests separate action on the specific item. Anybody have anything to pull?
I'd like to pull D.
D. Anyone else? Would you like a staff report, Dean?
No.
Can I move the balance?
Okay, thank you. We have the balance been moved, or a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go to D. Would you like a staff report?
No.
Okay.
What I would like to do is, I'll move the item, but I would like to add a request. We have four Budget Standing Committee meetings, March, April, May, and then in June. I would like to request that we get a summary from either Finance or the City Manager after the meetings to kind of let us know what actually transpires and what they're thinking. I'm going to submit a list of, of items that I believe are options for us to seek some new revenue, and I'm hopeful that they will be dealt with by that committee as well as all. I'll submit that to you, Chet, shortly.
And just on the schedule, I do have, I mean, generally, the schedule is fine from my perspective, but I am on the Budget Standing Committee, and I do have two conflicts with the dates here, so I'm okay with moving this and then, and then changing a couple of the dates, if we can do that.
Yeah, I haven't even looked at the, at my calendar yet versus this, so if we can be flexible on that.
And also, I might add that we, there will be some changes to this as we get further down into the year, so yes, these, these dates will need to be flexible, I guess.
Okay. And let me thank the Budget Standing Committee again. I know that it is a ton of work, and we appreciate you, especially in what promises to be a very tough year budget-wise. Thank you both. So, Dean moved? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we, D is approved. Discussion item 11, Southern California Association of Governments. We need to send a delegate. The, according to my meeting with Wendy today, the only two people interested were Dean and myself, correct? Did any people put names forward? Dean, you went last year, right?
Yes, I did. That was the first time Warren has been the one.
Yeah.
That's gone consistently, and I found it very helpful and interesting. Right now, we do not have good representation at SCAG. I discussed that with the city manager as well, and I'm interested in ultimately going for that position representing our district on SCAG, so that was kind of my reasoning.
You always do a fine job representing the city. Why don't we send you? And you'll report back to us, please?
Yes.
Seeing no other business, we will adjourn until our next scheduled meeting. Thank you.
Do you need a closed session?
No, there's no need for a closed session, but do we need a motion on the appointment? Are you?
Oh.
Let's do a motion in a second would be great.
All right. I'll nominate Dean.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No? Okay. Now we'll adjourn. Thank you.